I was on, I was going on news, I was calling the police, I was saying, I was online and I think four hundred and fifty chairs got posted within the first.
Lindsay, can you hear us?
Be here.
Are they just connecting?
I don't even know.
Lindsay, she's our administrative director.
Hey, hear me.
Hi, I'm chair Britten on the funding commission. And yesterday.
Oh, okay. So this is, I mean, we have Lindsay.
Hey Lindsay.
Can you hear us? I'm just still kind of.
Are we expecting any else to show us?
That should be it. Tom said he wasn't gonna be able to.
Yeah.
I know. He said he didn't get a notice, but to me it's like.
Stop the same notice.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And this time I actually got an agenda. I maybe didn't get a stack if I got the agenda. I sent you a big thank you yesterday.
Yeah, I saw it. This one was just, um, I got the strategic tourism plan last night, so I was like, I want to get that to them. And I'll, I'll tell you. Lindsay is our vice chair, so she should be running the meeting.
Yes, she's busy, isn't it?
I just sent you the links, I'm gonna look better right now. Thanks, thanks. Important links. There you go.
Martin doesn't talk to me about what goes on in meetings, but he did say he enjoyed the finance presentation the other day.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried to give as much information as I possibly can. So. It's better. When he comes home from a meeting, I'll say, well, was it interesting that something happened? We best watch it.
Can you hear us?
There we go. I can hear you.
I'm gonna hang up the call.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can.
And it's like the sound is okay?
Yeah.
Okay, it's pretty good. Alrighty, so, um, can you see us too?
Yeah.
Okay, um, to my right, to my right, we have, um, our new deputy city clerk, her name is Madi. So, and then, uh, right next to Madi is Jamie, she's our finance, and our administrative services director. And the rest of the committee, I don't know.
When you call meeting to order, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, just call it to order.
Awesome.
Great. Still trying to get, I need to try to get my headphones hooked up so that I don't hear the other meetings going on in the other room. Um, and I'm trying to find the agenda that you had you just sent us also.
The attendance there, but there was a hundred and seventy some odd pages that, um, she just got printed off, so.
Okay. From the last meeting. Okay. Okay, so what we wanna start with today, Jackie?
Um, you'll be reviewing the minutes of the previous meeting. And the minutes are attached, what was, you selected a vice chair person which you do, um, the committee considered, um, the American Legion post proposal. Um, the direction was to utilize a middle, they will hold that application and consider it for twenty twenty four, uh, twenty twenty four review, um, and then the funds for Cinco de Mayo were relocated from A and A Promotions to City of Sunnyside. Um, they discussed the lodging tax advisory committee plan and vision, which kind of went into the draft and policy. The draft policy which they approved, and that is attached as a copy, good. And that's it.
Okay.
I forgot, did we get all the way through the draft policies at the last meeting?
Yeah, you guys approved it as.
Just forgotten.
Yeah.
Which on the agenda says draft policy, but it should just be just a copy of the what you guys approved at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So does everybody approve the minutes then? Do they look correct, everybody?
Looks good.
I made a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. There you go. That's what you officially need, ma'am.
Okay.
A second?
I'm still, hold on. Okay. I second, if I can, yeah.
Okay.
Jackie, can the chair second?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I second, yeah.
Then the vote?
All approved, Amy?
I wasn't here, so I'm not gonna vote.
Okay. Well, I guess motion passes and the minutes are accepted from the last meeting. Okay. Okay, uh, and then are we moving on? Cause the next one after that is just the RFP schedule, so we're moving on to that?
Um, it's the next one is the finance department staff introduction and, uh, received guidance from them. So I have, uh, Jamie here. She has, um, I already introduced her, um, she wants to give the committee some guidance on using lodging tax funds. And also just everyone the opportunity to talk about the proposed position for, um, the community project coordinator, cause I know it's been a hot topic.
It has.
Amongst a lot of people, so, um, I'm happy to discuss that with you guys also. Um, but because that position came up, there was a lot of discussion in council, outside of council with members, members of the community about LTAC funding, because, um, we have proposed that the position.
Be taken without cash.
Applied for LTAC funding, um, as part of the, the support for it. Um, that amount was assuming just the thirty thousand dollars that has historically been put to Cinco de Mayo. Um, the city handles Cinco de Mayo this year, um, and the city wants to continue handling that event. So the city will be applying for the Cinco de Mayo event, um, from now on. And so, assuming that the city has awarded the Cinco de Mayo event, then that, those funds will be used for that. Um, so because of all the con- conversation about this, there was a lot of questions that came up about what LTAC funds are allowed to be used for, who can qualify, how we should use them.
Were there?
Yes.
I don't remember.
Well, outside of, outside of this room.
This room?
Okay.
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, well, I got some markets requests and people asking if, if, if we could use LTAC funds at the city, which we can. Um, but.
It might wouldn't.
Should we?
The great question.
So I, I went and researched the RCWs because I wanted to make sure that I was fully clear. Um, I haven't served as a liaison for LTAC before. I mean, as a finance director, I understand the, the specifications of the special funds, but, um, I did do a little bit of research, so ours, I have actually some information. This is kind of just copied, and I can send this to you Lindsay, copied out of, um, an email that I sent to Jackie. But RCW sixty seven twenty eight eighteen sixteen, it does not prohibit, there's nothing in the, um, there's nothing in the statute that prohibits a for-profit company. In fact, it doesn't address a company's profit status at all.
Correct.
But it does narrow the use of funds to the following organization sites. Directly by any municipality. Indirectly through a convention or visitors bureau, or through, and indirectly through a destination marketing organization. And so, a conversation came up of what is a destination marketing organization? A destination marketing organization is an organization that may be for-profit or it may be nonprofit, but the main focus of that organization is to promote a particular destination. Um, versus what, what historically the Cinco de Mayo money had gone to is a promotional company, which is a company that prom- promotes events. Um, and so it, it doesn't traditionally qualify as a destination marketing organization.
But that is the name of a company. Have you asked to make sure with the promotional company?
No, no, and, and I'm not making a, a judgment on.
No, but I just made a statement, so I'm asking, have you ever had the conversation to ask the businesses that that's just what they're called, or have you, you're just assuming they're promotional?
Well, I looked through the applications that were provided to LTAC for the last year, and based on the experience that was quoted in the applications, I'm not sure that it qualifies, but I, I'm not making any judgment. In fact, I say here, I'm not saying that we've done something wrong incorrectly, fraudulently, but we may just wanna consider how we're using those funds. The reason that it could come into conflict is a, a company that, the, the point of LTAC funds, right, is to be used in a community to bring people specifically to this community, not collected within this community.
Not specifically to this community, specifically to heads and beds.
Exactly.
You gotta be clear about that. So tired of hearing it said wrong. It is to bring people greater than, say, fifty mile radius.
Right.
I know my RFPs, I come from a city background.
Yeah.
I read them before I ever got appointed this first time, and I brushed them the second time. So it is good, heads in beds, not just tourism. Tourism happens to be a wonderful side effect. If you don't have tourism, why put heads in beds? So they work hand in hand, that it is to put heads in beds.
Right, but the plans are collected within the jurisdiction and they're remitted to that jurisdiction.
From that I know who, who have heads and beds.
Right, for that LTAC to, to go ahead and make a recommendation to that jurisdiction, city council, to use the funds. So I think inherently they're meant for the use of that jurisdiction for the heads in those beds. So, um, I just wanted to bring up, you know, Jackie and I talked about this, we looked through some of the applications. Um, in looking at the applications, there were, I did have, I'll be honest with you, I had some concerns about the completion of them, specifically the financial portions that there were, they, they didn't make sense, the math didn't add up. Um, and Jackie and I discussed that perhaps it would be a better idea to have them reviewed by somebody who has a, of more of a financial background to ensure that the use of the funds is consistent with the RCW and that the proposals.
But that's what they turning a receipt for, correct?
Turning a receipt to.
To and to get money from LTAC. So you can't just write somebody a check, you have to provide a receipt in order to receive the funds.
Right, but that's not about the proposal.
But you just got done saying that the allocation of the money didn't make sense.
But the application in the proposal. In the proposal, correct. Um, so the, the couple of proposals that I looked at, basically, I, I know you've all seen them, it's, it's the, it gives you like a starting, this is the amount that the person is starting with, this is how much revenue they think they're gonna bring in from what sources, this is how they expect to extend the funds, um, in, in what way, and how much they expect to have leftover. So it's, it's kind of a math problem, right? This much plus this much minus this much equal this much, but it, it wasn't added, it doesn't add up. So to me, I would see that as an incomplete application. So all of the revenues are not listed there, that cover all of the expenditures. So and then in addition, I know that we haven't, the city, even though we should and we're, we are allowed to, hasn't audited the financials from our different programs.
We have asked for that, uh, in almost every meeting. We do not feel comfortable as a group. It, it should be audited every year, and, um, if not by a city member, we're glad to take that on and at least make sure the, the receipts match. And, um, organizations have been doing this year after year after year. I personally have heard of some improper usages, personal dresses for a, a particular group, and of course, that's not. You can't go home with a dress, um, on, on city money. Uh, our member chief told me once, I'm, you gotta pay for my beer, I can't pay for your beauty. And, um, so there's some things that can and can't be done.
Right.
And, uh, but also when we look at this, we've gotta look at intent. When you're looking at anything legally, I understand you're coming at this from a finance background and I have a whole list of questions. Sure, you also have to look at what was the intent was this one that was written.
Yes.
Legally. Did they mean for cities, I come from a city background, city of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
And I remember when they went after my money, uh, 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 you know, the funds that I was managing, because there was money there. That's just a city thing, it's how it's done, I understand that, but what did these people mean when they said a city could re- could collect money for reimbursements of employees? Did they actually mean to pay a salary to someone? Uh, um, did they actually mean to take a quarter to a half of a budget and not use it for tourism to pay an employee? What happened to the fire employee that we just hired who was gonna be three quarters of the person? That now makes one and three quarters person we're going to be talking about to manage not all of the events, which was said at the publicly at the last meeting. It was made very clear, but let's see if I can get these out so you can answer them.
Sure.
Uh, it was said, many of the grants are available for salaries such as this. Well, then why not go after the grant first and then hire the person? People in the city are fed up. Have you looked at your salary, uh, at the, at the employee level? I mean, it's just grown and grown and grown, and we don't have the numbers of growth in the city supporting the growth of positions. I think we're at about a forty percent. Uh, I'm not sure, that was the best I could estimate just looking at online, who was the supervisor? But like, at least a thirty, if not forty percent supervisor to employee ratio. Um, so why not do something a little gentler for the city employees? Just, I'm not necessarily for or against, I haven't completely made up my mind yet, but I know what I'm being bombarded with is tired of another employee being tired. And, um, personally from an LTAC point of view, we don't appreciate going after the budget without even coming and discussing with us beforehand and it being presented, not classy, not classy. Um, it should come here, we're the ones who are supposed to make the recommendations, how money is supposed to be spent, and then city council, but, and we weren't even included in the discussion, so not classy.
Um. I agree.
Uh huh. Um, you know, what did happen to the person that fired, that was fired? No, no answer was given. It was stated, uh, that Cinco would be a one-time event. And council made it clear at that point, we should not be getting, it was publicly stated again by council. We are not to get in the business of being an entertainment industry as a city. That's what was said. That was changed. That was an answer, hang on, let me get them all out and then you can go. But then who, who approved it? Who decided they can just go ahead and approve that? That's pretty faulty. Um, it said the person will not be able to do all the work of the events, which is completely true. It was publicly stated at the last meeting, there's no one person that can do all the work. Well, the problem is you've now made so much animosity in a city level with volunteers, there has been, it's just a reality. Um, that that I don't know if you're gonna get the cooperation that you've had before. And so if you only have one person doing it, they're not going to work all the events. Matter of fact, I think they only said they wanted this employee to work Cinco, the parade, maybe the festival of trees, sunshine days, I can't remember if there was another, but that was it. They weren't gonna work any of the other events, they weren't wanting to be proactive for tourism, they weren't gonna be proactive for heads and beds, and they were gonna answer the phone. I'm almost done. And, uh, let's see. So I, here we go, one more, actually, yeah, just one more. And when asked who would take on the other events? The person who was giving the information at the meeting stated that, um, they did not wish to answer publicly and on record. Wow, that didn't sound good for the community as well. That would be exact, almost verbatim the exact what, of what was said by this high-ranking official who was giving the meeting and presenting this as an employee, so go on.
Um, would it be helpful if I provided you guys with the job description that we're going to?
I got it.
Okay, um, we did make some adjustments to it after the first study session based on some of the feedback that we got, and I do understand that it was confusing. Um.
Especially.
Well, and, and, well, that's what a study session's for though, you know, to bring it up, and, you know, the, the position in and of itself is up to the city council to approve, but we present it and we, and we ask it, we say, this is something that the city staff has come together and thinks that this might be a good idea for the city, something that we need. And then we bring it to council and they decide what they wanna do with it. So, and that's the process that we're in right now. Um, so in regards to using the LTAC funds, it, I, I will admit to you, it may be slightly presumptuous to assume that we would have been awarded those funds. But I did, we did discuss it as a group, and if the city would like to continue putting on that event. Well, let me, let me correct a couple misconceptions, really quickly. There's a, there's a misconception that it is not a proper use of city funds to promote community and to have festivals and to provide entertainment. That is a misconception.
Oh, I don't think we have that misconception in any way. We want to promote these events and, I mean, that's, that's the whole point, yeah.
But I'm not talking about just LTAC funds. We can use regular.
City money.
Yes.
City money for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, um, it has been a priority of the council and of staff to start really working on community building. And there are a lot of areas that we know that the city has not done the best job in. One is managing business licenses and having a good process in place for special events permitting. Um, there's, there's some holes in our operation right now, and I mean, we can talk about, we can have a whole conversation about staffing levels at another time, but I have done the research as part of my job, and, and we are understaffed based on our, 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 our population, and we are growing. And we have a thousand residential units that are all ready to be permitted.
That's amazing.
So, so we are growing and the city has operated on less than far less staff than other cities of similar size and operation.
Yes, but you have to remember, I, I know I myself as a businessperson, I don't come to the city for help. And I'm sorry to say that, I recently just did that, and now that employee is saying, I didn't talk to her. And I'm like, wow, why would I even put something forward all the way up to a city manager level that I didn't make a phone call in and that employee say that? So I, I'm sorry that's being said, but I wanna let you know my personal history with the city. Twenty-four hours after arriving at, to city guide, I was told you're gonna be shut down in seven days and never operate your business again. People do not have a good relationship in terms of the city, we mean finances, me, that's just it. I've been very hopeful, Martin and I have both been very hopeful about that. We didn't do what other people did, we didn't sue, we got involved because we love our community and we enjoy our relationship with the city.
Hmm.
But that being said, the reason why we don't need the numbers that other populations do, so I just wanna point that out, it's because we don't have as many people as, as we should, and I really wanna work on it.
I do think that one of the reasons.
You want the staff.
Because we have terrible reputation with business.
Yeah.
And with development and with events. And as we correct that and we start putting the city on the right track, it does require us to make that investment in staff to appropriately handle those things, because otherwise we just fall back down to where we were and we provide crappy service. And so knowing what's coming down the pipe, you know what I mean, with, with the, the growth and development, knowing how important it is to everyone on council and the leadership, at least the leadership group of staff that we have working right now to develop and to ensure that we retain that sense of what Sunnyside is as we move into the future. We want to take a leading role in making sure that that is launched. And so I think previously it had never been considered that the city was capable of pulling off something like the Cinco de Mayo thing. The city didn't have the right things in place, we, we didn't know what we didn't know, and what happened is we did it, and it was successful. And as, as it being a, you know, one of the city's signature events, there's it, it should be run, and, and my, this is just my opinion, so I'm speaking as Jameson, not as.
City employee.
But it should be run, it should be sponsored by the city, it should be there to develop that city community feeling where people get to see their officials, they get to see their police, their fire, you know, and, and the community comes together. Rather than just, you know, coming and paying your water bill, you know? The city has a huge state in, in developing a, a wonderful culture. And we have a great culture, and we also wanna preserve that. So one of the reasons for this position even being dreamed up was what happened with Cinco de Mayo, the fact that we were able to pull it off, and it was successful. And.
Profitable or not profitable?
It was not profitable, no, the city lost money, but the city allowed to spend money on that. It is a proper use of funds to happen.
Money, you, they stated that it made profit, and then now you're going to say it didn't make profit.
I don't, I didn't state that it made profit. We haven't even finished the accounting for that, to be honest with you.
Cause if I'm wrong, you said, you were there and you said you and Elizabeth said that it made profit. And last council meeting.
Well, we have revenues, but.
That it wasn't profit.
Oh, the city spent a lot more money than the city brought in. But we do bring in revenue, there is, there is revenue that comes in, but that doesn't mean that there's a profit. And so, um, which is one of the problems with some of the applications, where, and, on the application, if there's, if somebody is providing some other funding for that, then they need, it needs to be listed, that your, is it an in-kind donation? What is it? Well, for us, it's city funds. We're using general fund money to supplement the cost of Cinco de Mayo. So there's, there's also, there is potentially LTAC money, there's revenue, and then there's city funds that would, that would fund that, that entire event. So the LTAC money, you don't, if yes, in developing this position, we considered the thirty thousand dollars that is part of the, historically part of the Cinco de Mayo event from LTAC as part of the, the, uh, revenue amount that we knew could help support it. But it, it's not the sole source of, of of that position, and, and truthfully, um, we will, we would be proposing the position even without it. But because the city wants to continue to provide the Cinco de Mayo event anyway, the city will be, do, will be applying for those funds for the Cinco de Mayo event.
Why not contact until you get your grants? Calm things down at a city level, and, you know, you, yes, we have the growth, we're gonna actually get housing in Sunnyside, what a miracle, it isn't here yet. And why not go after the grant, then hire the employee? Why not do it so it's not so challenging, especially if we're already putting money away for a building? I mean, it's just, you're going after, at least with the building, I think, I'm not exactly certain, but about half, it seems like. You're going after half the income, at, at a time when we finally got a group together that's being very proactive and wanting to add things like car events and work to get a car thing. And, and, and another thing is when the city did start doing projects at a city level, I heard there were numerous staff complaints for being forced to volunteer. So we don't wanna get in the position where we hire one person where it's already publicly been stated cannot possibly do the job that asks staff to do things and be sued by city staff because they're being forced to work events.
Not heard that at all from you. Well, can you give me your source? Because as.
No, I'm not gonna get the source, otherwise people are running around to me. I have also heard that Amy was taking money, um, from vendors and not reporting it. So that's what I'm being hurt, so that's what the community is saying.
I, I fully understand what you're saying, I, all I can. I I fully understand what you're saying. If I, all I can tell you is that the rumor mill is usually not correct.
I'll tell you privately later.
Sure. Um, I will always, I will always answer questions as frankly and as honestly as I can.
Okay.
I have not heard from any.
There was the trees, uh, the festival of, working on the festival of trees, to be specific, the festival of trees and then the city um. Get together for all the employees, our our evening function.
And somebody was forced to volunteer is what they said. Okay, I I haven't heard that, but I do know that this the city manager. Because it is and and the directors and the supervisors, because these are important things, we've authorized the use of overtime. When people, if people want to volunteer to come in outside of their regular shift, we have authorized.
Fully, you're fully allowed to do.
And we have also authorized the use of regular staff time within business hours to prepare. For those things. And those are the same things that we planned to do and that we did for Cinco de Mayo this year. And one of the reasons that we spent a lot more money than we brought in is we paid a lot of overtime for our city staff members to participate in that. A a pretty sizable amount of overtime so that we could make sure that it went off. But those are the same things that we would plan to do, having the Cinco de Mayo event. Going forward as well with or without LTAC funding.
Is that a good use of city funds, save overtime for an event that could be run and have been run by volunteers? Not paid nearly as much.
I think the intent would always.
I appreciate, I think you had a very difficult question.
But I think the intent, of course, would always be that community involvement should be based on people wanting to be a part of their community. And. I I can only tell you that we hope to soak that. And I understand what you're telling me is that. Out there in the community, there are people that are not feeling that way. I I can't as one individual do much about that, except that, you know, we're we're making an effort. Um. So I really, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to say on that line. I mean. I believe that people will step forward and volunteer as they always have. I also believe that when the city operates something, the city is a not, is a nonprofit. City is not allowed to make a profit. The city can't make a profit. So. The city can break even. The city can put some money aside to plan for the future, but the city cannot make a profit. So. When the city provides something, it is usually done as cost efficiently as it can be. And this year, because it was last minute, we did have to use a lot more overtime than I think we would ever have planned to use.
Because of.
Ever. And and the the lack of planning time, there was just a lot more that went into it, but.
Which I don't need to know.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and I'm sorry, what was the second part of your other question right there?
I just think there's a lot of he say, she said, and that we go to the actual source and only stuff to the person. Okay, I'll tell you who my source was about staff complaining. So was Alba.
She told you that staff complained about having.
We have a conversation.
Yeah, she didn't share that with me. So and I, I mean, I can talk to her about that. That being said, though, I mean. If that is the perception of a staff member that complained to her about that. I can't go back and undo it, but by putting a position in place where we have a higher level of control over how things work. We can manage it going forward so that it doesn't happen again.
Maybe you want to mention her name because I think she does an amazing job for the city. Just because I disagree on one employment position. Doesn't mean I disagree with all of the things that she does. I mean, I got to disagree with my husband a lot more. She's like, I disagree with him for looking at all of them. But um, I just wanted to get everything out because I have heard, I know Lindsay has heard. And I hope I'm not speaking for you. And I know you've heard complaints from people in the city. And I just know I have a bitter mouth. And so. I thought I'd get it all out. How long? I mean.
I think there's a lot of. Making a lot of people mad and they're not gonna volunteer. I've heard several times. And I think that we need to. Bring people together.
Yes.
And not make, want them to keep continuing volunteering instead of making these people very angry.
I think at the very least, if somehow this position goes through, you need to reach out to the organizations that are volunteer. Need to reach out to Rotary. You need to reach out. You need to, you need to smooth. You need to recognize that this was not, for whatever reason, there was. I don't even know how it happened. I don't know.
Well, I think I I don't know how it happened either, but I don't know how a huge portion of people got. Completely incorrect information about what this position was or why we were putting it into place. The fact that we had people showing up at the city council study session. Thinking that what we wanted to do was take away the light and implement from Rotary is ludicrous. And was never part of the discussion whatsoever in any way, shape or form.
Didn't even know that happened.
Yeah. And so I don't understand, really, I'm with you. I don't understand where all of the rumors are coming from or who. Thought that they had a direct source for information that was spreading it because I'm the direct source. You know, I'm the person who wrote the job description. Based on a conversation that we have with leadership and by direction from my boss, the city manager. I'm the one that put that together, put that in place and made the presentation. So anyone who's saying anything else about it. Does not have the correct story.
I, the only information I got about the position was what was done at the last city council.
Perfect. And that was the most updated version of that job description.
Which is where my questions came from. None of that was rumored. Those were all.
And and so the.
Comments.
The parts of this this position that are actually dealing with LTAC or with with events. I mean, it is a big portion of the job, but that's not the whole job. The whole job is much bigger than that. It's, it deals with special event permits or private organizations. Private people, public organizations, community, it deals with in interfacing with businesses. Um, it deals with being a liaison to those groups. That's part of the job description. That this person is gonna be somebody out in the community, helping to build community. That's a huge portion of what this job is. And so you you say, yeah, that's a good idea. Well, that, yes, that is a good idea. That's what, that's what we're trying to do. And the fact that it got started off on such a terrible foot, it's really a shame to me because. As somebody who's really excited about the direction that Sunnyside is going, and I see this growth coming. And I feel like, you know, we've kind of got our finances straightened out. Yes, we operated on minimal staff and a shoestring budget for a long time because everything was so screwed up, but. We seem to have all of the things going in the right direction right now. I'm really excited. To like be part of this and to put these things together and to see this growth and to help, you know, this community come together. And so to have the railroaded sort of off track like that.
How about, how about the city taking, how about, forgive me, you taking responsibility? If you wanted to go after LTAC funds. You really should have come to us before going to meeting and at least explain it to us and get up on board before you go to city council. How about mentioning it to the members? How about sending an email? Hey, I'm gonna be doing this if you want some input. How about any kind of.
Say on that for a minute, Peggy, though, how excited you are, Jameson, is how excited we are that.
Yes.
To plan the event. And in one meeting, it was told that she wasn't gonna be able to plan the event anymore. That is what was said.
Yeah.
For Cinco de Mayo, for Cinco de Mayo. Correct.
And but in the original thing that you guys had, it says to organize and manage the community events.
On behalf of the city, every single one of these community events has something. That the city does. We block off streets, we provide extra police, we have fire, we do cleanup, we, there are. Every single thing that happens in the city.
You going behind everybody's back is like, kind of like you coming to us. And I'm saying, you going behind, which is saying you didn't bring it to LTAC. It's kind of like you're telling those people they're not doing a good job.
And that wasn't the intention. And so the thing I will apologize for is that that it came across that way. But. There's no reason.
Very sneaky.
There's, well, and I wasn't trying to be sneaky. I didn't know you. I didn't know anybody here, you know?
Well, why would we bring it to LTAC first?
Because why would we bring it to LTAC when it's, it's acquired?
No.
No, the.
For.
To get LTAC funds, yes. We have to.
Yeah, I don't.
Somebody has to apply to get LTAC funds. So you're.
With this position. If somebody else applies for another event, you're, we have to say yes or no. Well, LTAC, we say yes or no if we're gonna get the thing. So if we say no to the city. And council votes for that person, you're still gonna take it away?
Yeah, yes.
The city of Sunnyside council votes that they want this person to do it. And you guys are not happy with what council and what LTAC voted, you guys are still gonna do what you want.
No, the council tells us what to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. A council vote.
So what you're saying is, okay. If somebody were to apply that wasn't the city for this event, let's just say you, because we know that you've done it before. You applied against the city's application.
Mm-hmm.
And LTAC recommended you to the council.
Mm-hmm.
And council approved you, then yes, that's that's done and done. The city would do our part like we normally would. You would get your money and it would be fine, but that's part of the process. So. The assumption in the job description that we would get those LTAC funds, I apologize for that. That wasn't the intention. The intention was thinking that that there wouldn't be competition for the Cinco de Mayo event. Because the city had handled it and the city made it clear that we wanted to handle it going forward. Whether or not somebody wants to put an application in. To handle Cinco de Mayo in competition with the city is up to that individual. So the assumption that the city would be awarded that was made thinking that, not thinking about the fact that there may be a competitor. And so I apologize for not having the foresight to see that angle of it. But in no time did it enter our mind that the LTAC committee would discontinue giving money for Cinco de Mayo. And because it's something that we've always had, that has been integral to the city. So the.
We're actually asking more of our vendors now. Um, one thing I don't know if you're aware of. But if you haven't been part of the meetings is, we're actually asking more of our vendors now. We're asking them to be more proactive. Do other things. Um, but for sunshine days, we want to see that build with events that involve the community. We're challenging to not do status quo. We do not want status quo anymore. We want to see these things grow and and be integral. And that was a big thing. That's why we rewrote things. When we found out that the city actually turns away people when they drop off their application process, just because it wasn't the right month. Those are the things we're talking about, the city doing.
Understand.
Okay, so when somebody comes in.
They never turned away anyone.
You can take their application.
They didn't have applications. They just asked, or is it submitted time? And we just, we just recently.
I don't understand.
At this last meeting, we made it for that we'll receive applications all year.
Right. Yeah, we talked about that.
We've never denied anybody if an application comes in. I've always brought it in, like, um, Gary Taylor's. Um, but we've never denied.
Unless, unless it's not complete, then Jack, I know past Jackie said. Somebody had submitted an application, but it was not correct. So she didn't want to bring it to us.
If they didn't have the requirement. And then outside of that window, like we talked about last time, we, I've never denied an application. We just only review them at the period of the the.
Submit.
This one, this submit period. But after this last meeting, we opened it up to receiving proposals all year.
Cause when we, there's a checklist. So when we get the applications, that's where Jackie checks. Like they have a bit.
Do they have everything?
They have their insurance, they have all that steps. Cause if we get it, we're assuming they have it. You were at the last meeting, Lindsay, you were, I thought that we weren't, I mean, I mean, even if they weren't complete. I thought it was just given back. And and then we didn't even have the names of who the people were or what they were applying for. Am I dead wrong? And if I'm dead wrong, please just tell me.
I thought that it was. I'm trying to remember. I honestly thought that it was just discussed that she does that. She she tells them how to fix it and how to do stuff. And then if they get it back to us, then yes, we review it. But that's to save time for us because sometimes there are a lot of applications get turned in, but they're not full applications.
Or like, we do have them not complete now. So, yeah.
You still receive them.
Yeah, but if they, you know, I know that before people haven't been turned away and said, no, it's been like, you need to finish this and come back. And sometimes they don't always come back. And so that's what's hard. And year round, it was kind of hard because um. You know, we give away funds and we just had to be careful. That's why we were doing it just one time a year. Because it was just easier that one time a year, say, this is our budget for the year and this is what we're gonna do. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Hey, you got all your answers.
I got all my answers.
On now, on the guidance on that. And so Amy, did you have anything on that, um, from the finance department? Any more questions?
So the thirty thousand, it's gonna be spent on an employee. Well, that employee will be the spearhead of the city's effort to provide Cinco de Mayo if. We are.
That's gonna be paid for their salary.
Well, not necessarily, not, not, it does. Or they're gonna use that money to ho- host the event. That's where I'm getting, that's where I'm.
It it's kind of half a dozen of one and six of another.
I'm just saying, because we were told a specific, I guess, group could not buy clothes. For to turn in for LTAC, but yet we're paying an employee. So. Is you, you have to, help, the the RCWs don't specify. What you can and cannot use LTAC money for, as long as it is used to put heads in beds. And so if a, if that staff member's job has a a portion of it that is directly. To bringing people here to stay in our hotels, then it is an appropriate use of funds to pay salaries.
If that program comes and they ask us for LTAC money and they put heads in beds. But they turn in their receipt to receive clothes or whatever it is with that LTAC money, then we can improve that.
You have to tie in that the clothes are actually. The are essential to doing their job. I mean, somehow. I I I could, I couldn't tell you without knowing a specific situation, but I could see, I'm just saying, for instance, what if we had a costume. That was required for something at Cinco de Mayo, that would be an appropriate use of money. Would it be appropriate to buy?
Cause I mean, everyone knows what we're talking about.
I don't, I'm sort of out of it, sorry.
So like Miss Sunny said, they came to us several times to get LTAC funds. In the past, and I don't know, maybe we've gotten the wrong information, in the past, we were told that they didn't want to see. The reimbursement of the, like, years from Target, they went to go buy clothes because they use that outfit to go and do. Ribbon cuttings, you know, like community events. So is that.
I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be totally straightforward with you because I just don't hold punches. How does Miss Sunnyside put heads in beds in Sunnyside? The pageant is attended by the family of the people that are running, who are probably from here. They go out to other communities to go into parades and they go to business openings and ribbon cuttings. How are they qualified in any way?
So because they have advertising thing, they're from Sunnyside. And um, also opening a new business that gets advertisement. How it related, it never worked. The math never worked. And we told them year after year after year. To please go ask people. I told them, come to Sunnyside RV, I'll write, give you money. And I did. And um, so we've asked them year after year to please go do that because. You have to equate a head in a bed, you know, how much it costs. And I certainly have never gotten anybody for any event that they participated in. But that doesn't. Um, but it was something that historically had happened and city council instructed us, they wanted it to continue.
That LTAC has said no. See, I would be like, you know, Lindsay, you're with the swim team things. I mean, the swim team brings people in to. Or like the invitational. Um, and I know that there's not like, like at least for the year when we have the invitation or something, that's people coming here.
Yes.
That will be staying here for several days. Like, that is a great use of LTAC, in my opinion, versus. Yeah, it's something where you're ambassadoring. I get it. I get what you're saying. It's an ambassador going out to other entities. So somebody can say, hey, yes, I saw the word Sunnyside somewhere. But as far as it like directly putting a head in a bed, it's kind of hard to tie that.
I I think it went all the same that I gave you all the information that I have heard, participated in, and most of it is not rumored. Only two things I ever said that I heard.
Yeah.
The rest of it came from that meeting last week and being uninformed beforehand. The bottom line is. If we pay all this money, if we're giving away half of our income to a building and a person and they're not doing all the events, what do we do?
Well.
You see what I mean? What do we do for the rest of the events? What is LTAC gonna do when we don't have the funding to pay for the other events? And we want to grow. We don't want just three events a year, but we would love to see fifty events a year.
Taking any more money. Than just what they would apply for for Cinco de Mayo. I guess I'm I'm not understanding how it's. How it's impacting your budget to that extent.
A hundred thousand a year?
Um, this position.
Wasn't it ninety-five that was.
So it's not, so if you guys don't get approved for.
So it's not, so if you guys don't get approved for that thirty, how are you gonna pay this employee?
That, well, the employee will be paid out of the general fund and the appropriate funds that support it.
So you can't assume and make a position and be like, we're gonna assume that this, we're gonna have money for it, you, you should have.
Well, as I explained, you're right, I probably shouldn't have assumed that, but in my, in my. Sillyness, it didn't occur to me for any reason that LTAC would not support Cinco de Mayo.
What was it? Please understand, this is the first time you're meeting us and you don't know my opinion.
Right.
I haven't said it, I've said, you know, my, my points and I needed clarification on, I haven't said, so.
And I'm not agreeing, I'm.
Okay, so please.
It, it didn't occur to me.
If I.
All in any way, and I'm just like complete ignorance. It didn't occur to me that's that, that LTAC would not. Provide money for the future of Cinco de Mayo. And so by the city saying that we're taking that over, we would just assume, we did assume, which you don't need to, whatever. Um, we just assumed that we would be allowed to take that money for the city to continue to provide that event. From what I'm hearing from you, I get that that's probably not. I, I should not assume that, and I'm probably going to. Rewrite this because I have until the end of the day to get my council stuff prepared. I may rewrite this to better specify how we would pay for it if we did not get LTAC. Um, but.
Can I? Can I clarify something really?
You're breaking up.
You don't. For Cinco de Mayo, we support you assuming that.
You're cutting out.
Cutting out.
Yeah, it says it's unstable.
Oh.
Is that any better?
Well, we can hear you now, but your mouth moves later, so you can try again.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're good now.
We support Cinco de Mayo.
Right.
Don't support the city assuming that they just. Are taking it over from someone who's organized it for multiple years. She's organized it since it, the chamber was here. So let me just clarify that really quick, that like the LTAC supports Cinco de Mayo, we really want the event to continue. I abstain from voting. Because I didn't appreciate that the city just said they were gonna do it and they didn't even put in the proper information to do it. The application was not complete. The application was not everything that we require. A and A promotions to do every year. So. We support Cinco de Mayo, please don't say that again.
I wasn't trying to infer that, and, and I guess, but what I'm, but what I will say is. You're also making the same assumption that you're always going to award it to the same person because that's who you've always awarded it to.
Yeah.
What if somebody else came in and applied for the same funding, so.
And we, and we've had that discussion before in many LTAC meetings. That what if somebody else comes in and we have asked to have a contract. With LTAC or with the city saying we're able to have at least a two-year contract. Or, you know, saying we're gonna be able to get it, cause it's very hard. To plan these events or to get, I guess you can get better deals when you do advertisement that pay now, you'll get it, I can't say, hey. Um, like, you can't assume you're gonna get it next year, so you can't just write a check and say. This is for the advertisement for the following year, because we can't assume that. And so, I mean, you can hear, we've always asked, can we do. Uh, contracts saying that we're able to host these events, cause what if somebody comes in? And they take it and they have no idea and we don't even. It's very easy to copy someone's work, in my opinion.
And saying, I can do this.
This is exactly why. An event that is so integral and a signature to the city should not be handled by a third party at all. Because if, if it is something that has consistently happened every single year and we want it to happen every single year. What if the company that did it last year, all of a sudden no longer exists? What if the club that provided something, all of a sudden no longer exists? I am not saying that we wanna take those from them while they're there, but the city can be that person, that entity. That keeps an event on course, and so. I understand what you're saying, but it's also not. It's not. The point of LTAC to support a for, a for-profit business to be able to plan for their, their next few years.
That you're gonna get that thirty thousand for that employee, no, I'm not assuming. I didn't say I was assuming, I'm just asking you the question.
No, I, we assumed, we did, and I did, and I, I already claimed that. I assumed that, that we would, that LTAC would provide money for Cinco de Mayo. That there would be an application to LTAC to provide money for Cinco de Mayo. And that if the city took that event over, that the city would be somebody who applied for it. So I did make that assumption. But even if, even without that. This position is still important as the entity, the person, the. The sort of hub for the city that manages how these things are done year after year. So.
What if, how many of these events are they gonna do? Again, that hasn't yet been answered.
We're not, everything to do.
Yeah, I mean, we heard Cinco, 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 that's the whole thing, but nobody's, I mean.
I mean, we're, it's better than a hundred thousand and I want all the events managed.
Right, and, and we'll manage it from the city's perspective. So we will manage, our person will be involved with whatever group is putting whatever on. To manage all of the application and the organization of city staff for streets. For parks, for police, for fire, for all special events to the entire city, even ones that aren't for the community.
So who's the group you're gonna work with? Who's the group you're gonna work with? Because in the before, before that was a paid organization, who then got their own F C O. So we're gonna pay an employee and we're gonna pay a paid organization, we're gonna be doubling.
You're not lost. The city is putting a, a position in place.
Okay.
That will help streamline and manage applications that come through the city. And assigning staff to be in certain places at certain times, this is a project manager type position. And so this person will work for the city and they will assist everyone who puts on any kind of events.
But not do the work, so we're gonna spend half our money and then staff has to pay the.
For Cinco de Mayo. Except for Cinco de Mayo, the city wants to do Cinco de Mayo.
Wow, that takes all our money, we can't hold, I don't think we can even host the remaining events that are currently budgeted this year.
Doesn't take any LTAC money, I guess I'm confused why you think it's taking LTAC.
A hundred thousand dollars is now going towards, twenty-five thousand going towards the building. You're not taking LTAC funding.
No, the only money for LTAC that the city would touch at all. Period. Would be if you guys recommended it and the council awarded it, and the amount we would apply for would be thirty thousand dollars.
Nothing else, why not the employee, my understanding.
It's, it's. It's for Cinco. There's no other money that is coming out of LTAC for this position.
Okay, wait, okay, but I, I gotta be clear because maybe that's only thing, so you're not coming after us for ninety-five thousand dollars?
No. No, I'm not, no one is.
You're only coming after us for thirty thousand dollars?
Correct, that we would apply for.
Then you're talking ninety-five thousand dollars and an employee salary was mentioned to council last time, and you were gonna pay for it from LTAC.
A portion, just that assumed amount of thirty thousand dollars. But there's also.
So what's the ninety-five?
The ninety-five is the total salary and benefits amount for a year for, to support a, a new employee. But.
But the city's going to be paying for that except for thirty thousand.
Right, and the portion of money, there's, there's twenty-five.
Cause they have to do overtime and all that.
Instead of overtime.
No, you're gonna pay overtime for other employees to use.
Over Cinco de Mayo, yes, so it's gonna cost the city.
Potentially, but we would try to get volunteers.
But can I get through this?
Well, I'm asking you a question, so you don't have to raise your voice.
There's a business license, it's twenty-five dollars if every business license goes towards tourism. Hasn't sort of gone towards tourism for years. Right now, that money has just been sitting over here, we sometimes sort of allocate that to pay for. Other things for Yakima Valley Tourism or, you know, whatever. That money, we're gonna specifically say from this point forward, that twenty-five dollars every year from every business license. Is now supporting this position, because this position is gonna be handling. All of that business licensing, streamlining, and the money was.
So you just want the money for Cinco.
Correct.
That Cinco was currently being paid.
Yes.
You know, I guess not coming to us beforehand, that is not anything any of us understand.
You understand why I would come to you beforehand, because I, because, yes, because we aren't considering that, that this is using. LTAC money aside from the fact that we would be applying for LTAC money. So from our perspective.
Oh, I guess I see it that way.
Was, you know.
Yes. Yes, yes. I can do that.
I wasn't trying to yell you, I'm just really sorry. I just, it's hard. It's hard when you're trying to get through a sentence and somebody keeps talking over you. Cause I'm asking you a question before I'm finished talking, but you're making professional.
Okay, so I think that Amy.
Oh, I don't.
Amy. We need to table this right now because we need to be done with this meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, we still have to review the twenty twenty-four RFP timelines, it's probably the most important thing, everything else is going to have to be tabled for the next meeting. Because, um, for one, I think it's really important for Tom to be here for the rest of it with the commit, the advisory, the plan and vision. So let's just review our timeline and then adjourn. And if there's any other things we need to discuss with, uh, Jamison. Maybe she can come back to another meeting that we can schedule, or Peggy, you can schedule another meeting with her.
I believe, um, that finance is gonna be taking over as the LTAC. Person, is that correct, Jackie? You're gonna step away and the finance will take over, so I should probably be part of these meetings going forward.
Who is our council person, do you know?
Mayor hasn't assigned anybody.
That's okay, thank you.
But I thought he said at the meeting that he was gonna take it.
He did say at the meeting he wanted.
I think he said, I'm sure in the, in the meeting, and I contacted him yesterday, he didn't say he was intending, so. Then that and then another one saying he's gonna take it, but I wasn't sure if he got voted to do it, or he just said he wanted to go on.
He didn't say. They can, they can.
He can, he can do it, I mean, he can assign himself, that's.
I'm just saying one council member, whoever.
I think they're hoping Julie gets elected again next year and it all works out, whatever.
Yeah, Mayor likes doing LTAC, so if he wants to come, he can.
So reviewing the RFP timeline, uh, what does that look like, Jackie?
Okay, so, um, everyone should have a handout for the general sunshine days and, um, lighted fire implement parade. Um, so we'll publish it July fifth and the nineteenth, it'll be open from the fifth through this, through, um. It should be July twenty-sixth, sorry. Um. And then just for this run, it, the RFP packet is available July fifth through twenty-sixth, but obviously. If any proposals come in throughout the rest of the year, you will see them, um. I just need a date. You know, you guys let me know if those dates are okay, I just need a date of when you guys will review them, and then I'm hoping that, um, council will review. Your recommendation on August twenty-eighth. So if any of these dates don't work for you guys, just let me know.
So the dating Sunday will, will be published July fifth through the nineteenth, and then.
Only, uh, July fifth and the nineteenth.
And the nineteenth, sorry, and then the, we'll get the notice published to the website, July fifth. And the second, or through the second.
Through the twenty, through the twenty-sixth.
Oh, so it's.
Yeah, it should be the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Cause originally I thought we could do it the, the second, but it would give us time that if. You guys need time to review the proposals again, cause that's what previously we've done two meetings. I thought we'll give you all of August to look at them, but if these days don't work, we can change them.
So we'll review them the twenty-sixth?
You'll review them any day in August that you guys tell me, that's why there's a little.
So are we doing two meetings? Cause I know normally we. Review them, we discuss them, and then the next one we vote.
So to you guys, that's why I just put review that date, if you guys decide to do it again, to meet again and review them, that's totally fine, just for this purpose, it's just listed as. This is the day you guys will first see them, you know, on the twenty-sixth, no, um. Sorry, you'll see them after you, after I get them, I'll publish them and send them to you guys, but. In a meeting, when do you wanna schedule in August to review them as a group?
My dates are, are open, I think we need the two meetings though, for sure.
Yeah, that's fine, you guys can, um, but just the first meeting that you guys will review them as a group, you just tell me what day in August works for you guys.
And should you need any help? I know you have a helper now, but should you need any help, if somebody is just. Cannot manage an RFP process or something like that, please feel free to, to call on the committee members. We'll be glad to help people walk through the process, not, not the system in any way answering any questions about the proposal or anything. Just the process, should you need any.
Right, and so, um, Jamison's team will be taking over, so, um, she will, finance will be reviewing them too, so.
Don't care, you go, if you need any help.
Amy.
About.
Yeah.
Wednesday still the best for you?
What was that?
Wednesday's going to still be the best for you in August?
I think so, I'm trying to figure when the school start, cause I want it to be.
Yeah, that's my concern too right now, um.
Getting both of them before school starts?
Well, just cause that first week of school, it's hectic, so I don't wanna. Commit, and it's.
Well, we can do it that they're due, I always publish four weeks. But we could do three if you guys want to, especially since now they're gonna, you guys are willing to accept them all year.
Can, can we do the beginning of August, so like the second?
Okay, yeah.
I don't know, I'm totally open, okay.
Yeah, August second, that all works better because also with my, um, with my work, the end of August doesn't work either, so. Okay, August second for the next one.
And then time is noon, work for everybody again?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll set it August second, um, for you guys to review them as a group, and then if you guys decide you need more time, we can schedule another one, and that way we have all of August.
Cause it just depends, it varies from every year, sometimes we don't need that actually, so I.
Sometimes we do.
Sometimes we do, so it'd be best to just see what you get, what's.
Especially if you're the finance person here, it might take a little longer.
I was gonna ask for a little clarification, so before, I guess, what I'm understanding is you just took them during one period. And then you, you basically approved and recommended them for the whole year.
So Jackie, so Jackie gives us a budget and she'll say, this is your budget for this year. And then she takes away, am I correct, the amount that goes to the community center? So and she gives us what we have, so then we kind of look, okay. Person wants this much, the person wants that much, and we kind of do, and then we review them, we're kind of have questions if they are here.
And so going forward, you wanna take them all year long, so are you going to award them throughout the year?
No.
Or you're still only gonna.
We just want to encourage them. Wants to award them.
I didn't think we were awarding them all year long.
Uh, Amy has it, has it right, I don't set the budget, I just give you, I ask my, to do a report, and then we give it to you guys and tell you guys this is what's in there.
Gotcha.
Um, and we always kind of just do a hundred thousand up top and then. You guys plug in the numbers of whatever you want, and then we tell finance, hey, this is how much they wanna spend. And then they do the budget.
Cause that's how we do it, and.
Four separate.
Right? Yes, we make sure, at the end there's zero, so that's really, if somebody comes in, like wants to apply, this really isn't.
That's why it was best to do it in just that one period, but, um. You have a few amendments.
When, what you're talking about, being able to, um, apply for funds for, for, I, I guess you're limiting yourself. To that year, cause you could have, I, I guess, I don't think there's anything in the statute that keeps you from applying for funds for a future year.
What do you mean?
Like, I. Right.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Well, there's money coming in. You know what I mean, throughout the year.
We have talked about awarding for two years in a row, we have not done that to date yet.
Okay.
Because we've been in trying to get. We've been trying to encourage people to do more, not do the same. And, um, and, and to seek outside funding themselves before coming here to ask for donations and things, and so we're asking them to do some work. Um, a lot of times the, the RFP just comes in and, and the information on it is so vague, and the information on heads and beds.
Right.
Is completely empty, and they say it can't possibly figure that out, and so.
They just want LTAC funds just to support it and they don't wanna go and do the work, when we're, we should be helping them a little bit. But not do it for them or give them the money to.
Right.
Host the thing, so that's where it kind of gets. Then when we review on, a lot of them, like, they don't make sense, it's like, you have no sponsors, but what if. We don't, you're asking for five thousand, but let's say we only can give you a thousand, are you still able to do the event? Or you can't do the event?
And that's critical, cause we want the events to happen.
Yeah, cause then if we awarded this person a thousand dollars to do the event. They're gonna be like, well, we need more, we're not gonna do the work, so then that thousand dollars, we could have gave it to. A different group that is actually gonna host an event. Like do something with, I guess, the, the money.
Um, the money is issued all through reimbursement or it's issued straight up upfront in the chat, reimbursements, right?
Yes, reimbursement.
Just reimbursements.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is I don't see a reason why you couldn't. Approve things for future years, even if you don't approve, like the same person for multiple years. Like approve things for.
Oh, are you putting in the money like?
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for me, for praying, we're gonna say they're gonna get twenty thousand.
Or asparagus festival.
Next year and next year and next year.
Asparagus festival, car show.
That's what you were saying, right?
Yeah.
We've been trying to do it, but we. It hasn't gone through, okay, so I don't know if.
This is our big year to try it.
Okay, yeah.
It's our year.
I, I think that's. Cause it's, it, that we just said for the signature events only because. Like somebody, let's say they come for a car show, you don't know if they're gonna have it.
Again, the next year.
Next year, next year.
Or whether anybody will.
Our signatures are that, we wanted to make sure that they were awarded every year. That amount of money, but there was nothing in yet that we were able to do that. So that's what we were working on.
And the other thing was that, like you said, is, is the business gonna be doing it again next year, will the teams still be together?
But the benefit to, well, if, this is just me, I'm just stippling, sorry. Not to take your, we, we can close the meeting if we want to and I can continue talking about this.
Yeah, that would be good.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, but I just, so are we able to, is that something we're able to do, but say in there? It's gonna be awarded, but depending on what, like not depending, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, it should be like.
Stability of the, uh, we need to take a look at the stability of whether the organization.
Yeah, that's a part of reviewing the policy that we still need to do and we still need to schedule. So um, is that gonna be before we get the, them this year or not? I think it needs to be before also, but it's coming up quickly, so um. The sense of finance is taking it over, then financing needs to look at their schedule and then let the committee members know what availability you have. Wednesdays are the best, I'll say that right off the bat um for everybody, but um. Other than that, I think it's best if you just let us know cuz we can tell you our schedules all the time, but it also depends on when you're available to do that. But we need to try to get that scheduled before. But um. Am I cutting out again? Okay, awesome, uh, okay, so we need to do. We need to schedule that one, so we will get an email on that then and we need to make sure that Tom. Um, is available to do that.
He's a critical person.
Yeah, and one thing they um. I wanna request for those this year, uh, when we get the RFPs is that if they were funded. Last year previously, somehow or another, I wanna see those receipts cuz I think I've questioned it every year. Where we know how, what they've gotten and what they received in reimbursements. But without the receipts, that's really hard for me to say like, oh, okay, sounds great, so. Somehow or another in the RFP, I wanna see, and I know that it's hard sometimes for them to do it, but I know you guys get those receipts, so. If we could get those, um.
How about I do that now versus later? I'll just give you the past few years' copies of the receipts. This for everyone that's um.
This received, yes. That would be helpful cuz even for me in the parade, like we have a treasurer that does all of it and so. It's even hard for me to go back and get some of those, um, okay. Other than that, unless there's anything important, I do have to go, so um.
I do wanna tell you that your motion did not carry on. Put it on your next meeting.
Okay. Just, yeah, do that, that would be good.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so.
Wait, I'll, I'll send an email out to, for Wednesday's availability.
Okay. That would be good, okay, um, I'm adjourned the meeting at one nineteen then.
Thank you.
Thanks.